Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. We will call the March 19, 2012 City Council meeting to order. First order of business is roll call. Charlene.
Nordstrom. Mason. Doyle. Sasso. Davis. Peterson. Roberts. Brown. Wright. Laurenti. We have Quorum.
Next order of business is executive session. There's no need for an executive session tonight. Next order of business is invocation, and we'll recognize Dale Barcher. Dale? Everyone, please rise.
Before we pray, I'd like to give you a personal invitation. Each of you have before you a card. And coming up on Thursday, April the 5th, is our Rushmore Plaza, the Rushmore Plaza Holiday and Ballroom, is our Faith and Hope Community Breakfast. We would invite you to come join your fellow business and community leaders for breakfast on Thursday, April the 5th. We could all use a little more faith, a little more hope. It's gonna be a great community event. You're invited. Let's pray. Father, we are grateful for this day of life. We're grateful for the reason for which we are gathered here this very evening. We understand, Lord, clearly, that you are the giver of life. When we raise our heads from our pillows in the morning, you give us purpose for which to live this 24-hour period. We'd ask you, Lord, tonight, that you would bring rain to our community. The earth is dry. This only but reminds us to pray for our firefighters. Bless each and every one of them. We are grateful, Lord, tonight, for those who serve in the armed forces of our great nation. Bless those who have served, those who are serving, both at home and abroad. And tonight, Father, we are mindful of those that are here tonight, serving our community. Each one of these, from staff to our city council members to our mayor, we bless them, Father. Bless their families, who they are apart from, this evening. Keep each one of them safe. Father, many of us have come here tonight. Our day has already been full. We may come here tonight a little weary. We'd ask for strength for the task ahead this evening. Grant each one of them wisdom discernment. Help them to be focused on their mission at hand, and we will be the first to say thank you. It's in the King's name, Christ, that we pray tonight. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dale. Our next order of business is to adopt the agenda. Do we have any additions or changes to tonight's agenda? Any additions or changes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
No move.
We'll go to Charity Doyle.
Will we be removing item 50?
Yes, we'll be removing that from the consent calendar, and the recommendation will be to table.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Brown and a second by Roberts to adopt the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business is our awards and recognitions, and if the Ward 1 council members could join me down front, along with Riley Coleman. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we are pleased to present the March 2012 Veteran of the Month recognition to Riley B. Coleman. Riley was born in Madrid, Spain. Can you pronounce that for me?
Torone.
Torone, okay. On July 24, 1963. At the age of three, Mr. Coleman and his family were relocated to Ellsworth, I can pronounce that one, with his father, who served in the U.S. Air Force. Mr. Coleman graduated from Rapid City Central High School in 1979 and enlisted in the U.S. Navy in October of 1980, at which time he was sent to Great Lakes Naval Training Base in Illinois. He was then assigned to the USS Cushing, a Spruance-class destroyer. He was classified as a boat-sweine mate throughout his career, retiring as Chief Petty Officer E-7 in November of '01. He served in several various sea and shore duty commands throughout his years with the Navy and in multiple roles: assault boat, coxswain, LCU crafts master, surface rescue swimmer, instructor, and Navy recruiter and canvasser. His awards and decorations include Navy Commendation Medal, Navy Achievement with Three Gold Stars, Navy Unit Commendation, Navy Meritorious Unit Commendation, Navy E Ribbon with Two Silver Stars, Navy Good Conduct Medal with Four Gold Stars, Navy Expeditionary Medal, the National Defense Service Medal, Armed Forces Expeditionary Medal, Humanitarian Service Medal, Navy Sea Service Deployment Ribbon, Navy Recruiting Service Ribbon, Philippines Presidential Unit Citation, Kuwait Liberation Medal, Navy Rifle Marksmanship Ribbon, and Navy Pistol Marksmanship Ribbon. He also received the Enlisted Surface Warfare Specialist insignia. Wow. Riley served an honorable and dedicated career of 21 years with the U.S. Navy. Since his retirement, he's worked for the U.S. Post Office in Las Vegas for six years and graduated from Western Dakota Technical Institute's EMT program in 2010. His greatest achievements include making Chief Petty Officer E-7 and participating in the liberation of Kuwait. He also participated in Operation Restore Hope in Saudi Arabia and Desert Storm and Shield. He is a member of the American Legion and the Retired and Enlisted Association. He has two daughters, two sons, and has been blessed with five grandsons. We commend Mr. Coleman for being a true patriot, and we thank you for all you've done to serve our country and community.
Wow, when you say it like that, it seems like a lot. Just want to take a minute and say thank you for the acknowledgement, and thanks to the Retired and Enlisted Association, and of course, my brothers from the American Legion. Appreciate it. Just glad that I could serve.
And is Stan here tonight? Stan Kennard? Come on up, Stan. And if Mike Multhorne from the Fire Department, and do we have anybody from the airport, and Cameron Humphries from the airport?
Well, thank you, Mayor, and I'll take the first part of Stan's career I can talk about with the city. Stan spent 16 or 17 years with the city of Rapid City, first for the Fire Department, and I had the privilege as a young firefighter to work, really understands leadership. When I first came here, Stan was an officer on one of the vehicles downtown, was on the truck company quite a bit, and so Stan was driving me around the city when I was a young firefighter, and taught me a lot of things as a young man myself, and I could tell a few stories about Stanley, so you'll have to catch me after council tonight, and I can tell those, but it's certainly a proud day for us to watch Stan bring his career with the city to a close. And again, certainly on behalf of the Fire Department, we thank him for his years of service and to make the department better and also for the city and keep it safe. So I'll turn it over to Cam for the second half of Stan's career.
Thank you. I'm Cameron Humphries from Rapid City Regional Airport, and one of the greatest honors that I have is an opportunity to recognize my employee, but more importantly, an employee of this great city. And Stan came to the city in 1978, and just out of quick curiosity, to see what was happening in the United States around 1978. Gas was $0.63 a gallon. Jimmy Carter was the president, and they had just introduced the cellphone but abandoned it, thinking that it was gonna be too big and bulky and nobody would buy the thing. So a lot has changed since 1978, but I will submit to you that the measure of a man like Stan are the things that didn't change during that time period. When I think about Stan's career, one of the things that I have a hard time with is that how do you betray to people 33 years of service to a community? It would be an insult to try to even approach that. But what I will tell you is that there are three things that stand out to me for Stan that haven't changed since he started here. I've heard it from Mike, who actually started out in the city around the same time that Stan did. I've heard it from all of the people that worked with him, and I saw it myself. The first thing is that I noticed with Stan is a great attitude. I have never seen a man that smiles more than Stanley. There you go. He always had a great attitude, no matter what we were doing out at the airport. The second thing that was very noteworthy about Stan is his honesty. I can't tell you the number of times that we would come in after Stan had worked the midnight shift, and in our office, we would find a nicely handwritten note to us saying, "Sorry to bother you, but I found this wallet and the $500 that are in it here in the concourse, and I wanted you to make sure that you got it back to its rightful owner." That happened time and time again. The third thing that stood out with me with Stan is his giving heart. He would go through the concourse, and one of the things that he would do when he was taking out all of the garbage is he would actually separate out the cans and the bottles, and he would sell the cans off and then give the money to charity. And, you know, he was always looking at ways of giving back to his community and taking care of the people out there. So I think that, you know, the measure, if I look at the measure of this man, I think that he has served the city well, and I thank him for his service in the 33 years, and with that, I'm gonna turn it over to him.
Thank you, thank you. Let's get it along to the spirit. I'm glad to be here tonight on such an occasion and see the individuals in the audience and also our council members and so forth. It just gives me great pleasure to say thank you. I've had opportunity at times with people traveling through here to bring a smile to their face, whether they lost a cellphone and people trying to contact them and couldn't contact them because their cellphone was thrown away accidentally, or to person that lost $1,980 in cash coming in from, I think, Canada, left it outside, bothered Mr. Cameron's staff to get it back to the people and make a record of it. And then I said, "Well, Lord, why me?" And so then, a few months later, there was over $2,000 there from a gentleman that worked at Shields there. So his staff, again, found those people to get them their cash money. It's not all about what I found and returned to people. It was in a circle back to me one day out of Haynes Street. Got out of my pickup, lost my bill folder, didn't know it, fixing to pay out, they called my name to come to the customer service. They lost my $300 and some dollars. Someone made the circle back to me, and I really appreciate it. So thank you. Thanks, everyone.
And now is the time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. We do have several speaker request forms, and let's first go to Lisa Motrick. Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. It's with great pleasure that I come, and thank you for calling me up first, just so I could say, as I'm glowing and shaking, a very warm and wonderful thank you to each and every one of you, to the attorney and their staff, and all the work that you've done. At this point, I know you've got many hours and many months of work that you've done in order to put forward the defense of the city of Rapid City and its people, and taking that all the way to Pier and on the hill, and fought and deserved the win that you won today. And I'm just here as a citizen, and I know that I have many that could not be here tonight, but I'd like to say on behalf of them and myself, thank you all again for your dedication and your service. I see a great vision in the future for Rapid City, and I see that by your leadership. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. And we'll go to Mike Kwasny. Mike?
Probably the best thing to do is say ditto. I thank you for all that you've done to support the vote of the people. It was an uphill battle, and it was taken care of. Thanks for all you've done.
And we'll go to Deb Jensen.
I suppose I should say ditto, but I'd like to really say big, 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 big thank you. Of course, my name is Deborah Jensen, business owner in Rapid City, fourth-generation South Dakota, and president of the Mount Rushmore Road Group, member of Scenic Rapid City, and proud, proud member of this community. A big, big thanks to the mayor for your leadership, and to you, Alderman Wright, and to you, Nordstrom and Roberts, who hand-carried the message of the people to Pier, and to Alderman Brown, and to Davis, and to Peterson, Laurenti, Doyle, Sasso, and Jordan Mason as well, for your courage to defend the people's vote and to fight against Senate Bill 157 these past weeks through your resolution, through your comments, and through your actions. Another big, big thanks to City Attorney Joel Landin for his legal expertise and explanation of the consequences of Senate Bill 157. There were many citizens, community leaders, and business owners, as you know, who also went to Pier. They wrote letters, they sent emails, and they made phone calls, excuse me, to lawmakers and to the governor. Governor Dugard listened, and he courageously vetoed Senate Bill 157, and of course, the House of Representatives sustained that vote today. So again, big, big thank you, Mayor, for your resolve, for your leadership, and to all of you on the council for your great efforts on behalf of citizens in all of South Dakota.
Thank you. I know it's a little bit out of order, but the person that deserves the most thanks is not here tonight, and that's Joel Landin, our new city attorney. He did an absolutely tremendous job in assisting with the argument and the discussion with the governor last Tuesday, and he did a great job of articulating the city's position, and his memo was passed out to all 105 legislators this morning, and I believe that he had a tremendous impact on this debate. So I want to take a moment to thank him. He has a much-needed day off, but thank you, Joel, for your fabulous effort on this. So we will... All right, we will now move on to non-public hearing items, items 3 through 74, and we'll first open comment on items 3 through 53. Do we have a motion to open public comment on 3 through 53? Motion by Brown, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do not have any speaker request forms on items 3 through 53. Did I miss anyone? Is there anyone that wanted to speak on these items? If not...
Move to close.
Okay, we have a motion to close by Davis and a second by Sasso. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on consent items, items 3 through 50. Are there any items that need to be removed? We do need to remove item 50. Are there any other items that need to be removed, items 3 through 50? We'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got three that I would like to remove. Number 34, number 36, and number 49, please.
Okay, we have 34, 36. Can you say 39?
49.
49.
49.
And 50. Okay, we have 34, 36, 49, and 50. Any additional items? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the balance of consent with the exception of 34, 36, 49, and 50? Motion by Doyle, second by Brown. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 34, we'll go to Gary Brown. Read this in the record for us, item 34.
Thank you, Mayor. To acknowledge the report and update on the Survival Space Initiative, I move to acknowledge.
Motion by Brown, second by Peterson, and we'll go to Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. With our recent fire close to our city, within our city, the risk of fire danger was brought to the forefront, and on our trip to Pier today, I think we saw four or five new fires that had burned. Fire danger is at absolute extreme. I think in the interest of protecting our fire crews, our property, our homes, I've asked that the Fire Department through Lieutenant Weaver to present his discussion on the wildland fire interface issue that's before us, if that would be appropriate. It was given to us at Public Works. I think it's such an important issue for the protection of our property and our people that we hear from it as a council and publicly, if that would be okay. I would ask Lieutenant Weaver to do his presentation, if that's okay, Mayor?
Yes. Tim?
Hello, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to come tonight. Let's see if I can get this thing started here. Okay. I don't have my clicker with me. Somebody can bring me a clicker? Okay. He's gonna go ahead and run the slides through for me, I think. Well, thanks for allowing me to come to speak tonight. I think everybody can understand the importance of this issue. Over the last couple of weeks, Rapid City has certainly had its share of events within the city limits and outside the city limits. And this issue, as far as the city itself and the neighborhoods within, in the concept of wildland fire and urban fire, we basically refer to these spaces as wildland/urban interface, and it's really where the wildland fires interact with urban areas, and the fuel in a wildland fire basically turns from the vegetation and it starts to include the homes within those communities. Thanks. This is probably gonna be easier. So what we do is we try to sustain ecosystems and communities, and what that means is we're trying to get communities that are compatible with fire. Fire is part of the landscape around here. Seems like a pretty obvious statement, but most of the landscape around here, even within the city limits, part of the natural process of that landscape is fire, and the fact that we haven't had a major event inside the city limits with significant losses in a long time is really quite remarkable, considering the fuel load that is currently in place. So what we want to do is both educate homeowners and give them the information that they need to make correct decisions, to try and get their properties both compatible with fire and also try and talk to their neighbors and see if we can't get neighborhood cooperation as well. So in response to this, the Rapid City Fire Department has known about this issue for a long time, and we've been trying to deal with it over the past few years, actually the past 15 years. It's manpower-intensive, had limited success. So last year, we started the Survival Space Initiative, and through that initiative, what we do is we educate homeowners through homeowner association meetings, neighborhood group meetings, public service announcements, when we can get them, and the Fire Department, through the initiative, has developed a really good program, educational program. We work with the State Wildland Fire Suppression Division, and we also work with the Great Plains Fire Safe Council in trying to get that message out there. So this is, basically what we have in the city, as this slide progresses through these bullets, you can kind of understand what we're faced with. Over the last week, we've had severe fire conditions. It's not supposed to be 85 degrees and 3% humidity and winds out of the southwest at 30 miles an hour in the middle of March. It's supposed to happen in August and October. So with severe fire conditions, we get a wildland fire. That turns into an urban fire. It's in an urban area. When it does that, we get multiple simultaneous structure ignitions that quickly overwhelms fire suppression efforts, which leads to reduced fire protection, and then the result is many homes totally destroyed. That scenario is, I know it seems dire, but in all evidence, it's probably gonna happen sooner or later, unfortunately. The fuel loading that's in most of the city, you know, the primary areas of concern, of course, are Carriage Hills, Pine Dale Heights, Wildwood subdivision, pretty much the western half of the city. And the fuel loading in those areas right now are such that that type of scenario is really not far-fetched at all. So we have some things that wildfires, everybody knows... So we have some things that wildfires, everybody knows that wildfires are pretty much the natural, the easiest natural pair to mitigate. It's pretty tough to mitigate against a tornado, a severe thunderstorm, hail, but wildfire is easy to mitigate against because you can actually control how it burns on a given piece of land. Laws of combustion dictate that and the easiest thing to control and when it comes to wildland fire is the fuel. And if we control how much fuel is available to the fire, we control how intense that fire burns. If we don't control the fuel, then we're at the mercy of, of the fire itself. So the homeowners do have control on how that fire will affect their property in the future. We also focus on the structure and the ignitability of that structure. We want to stop that transition from the wildland-urban interface. We want to stop that transition from the wildland fuel to the urban fuel. So it's not necessarily where the home is located that determines that ignition risk of the structure itself, it's how ignitable the home is. And through the initiative, we also focus on the homes themselves, shrubbery around the homes, what the homes are made of, roof structure on the homes, all the exterior building components, if they're flammable or limited combustible. The main key to a structure and whether or not it will ignite in a wildland fire is the roof itself and there's quite a few houses with combustible cedar shake roofs on them in the city. And so the importance of, of replacing those roofs with limited combustible materials or non-combustible roofing materials. Firebrands are something that most people don't really understand or really realize that is a major component in a wildland fire. A lot of people worry about the giant wall of fire coming at you. And so probably about eight out of 10 houses that burn down in a wildland fire burned down because of firebrands. Those little burning embers that swirl around in the air, usually with a fire, if it's severe fire behavior, we have a lot of wind. That wind, those severe wind currents carry those firebrands into every little nook and cranny, the same thing that blows your leaves into that corner of your deck. Those same wind currents would carry those firebrands into that fuel bed. And so the importance of, of really keeping these houses firebrand resistant is a real big factor in whether or not these houses will burn down in conjunction with controlling the fuel load. Remember, if, if the fuel load is controlled on the properties, what we essentially try and do is we try and keep the fire on the ground. If we can keep the fire on the ground, then we can do something with the fire. If the fire gets from the ground up to the aerial fuels and we have an aerial fire, then we have a big problem. So it's really a set of conditions. We control that, that structure themselves, what they're built out of. We control the fuel bed around the home and the area around the neighborhoods. And so that treatment area, it, it does the most good in the area of the treatment itself. And so it's very important to do not only the treatment around the structure in the first 30 to 50 feet of the house for a defensible space per se, but also the entire property because in areas of the city where we have, that we're talking about, a lot of people have, there's not uncommon to have two or three acres. And so if I don't focus on that entire two or three acres, then what I have is, is a lot of islands of houses that are defendable, but I still have a lot of property that's, that's going to burn with severe fire behavior. So part of, of what we do is we focus on two different things and what I'd like to talk about before. And so what we're doing is, is we're focusing on the roof structures themselves. We have a lot of houses in the city that have combustible roofs and so we're writing a, a pre-disaster mitigation grant through FEMA and right now, we currently have about 78 structures included in that grant. It's over about $15 million in property values that we're going to address here. The grant itself is going to be around $1.2 million and what we're really trying to do is, is minimize that potential for multiple structure ignitions at one time in a fire. And on this map, you can see those little orange dots are, are the houses that are included in that grant. You can see we're pretty much including every aspect of this wildland-urban interface area zone in the city. If you noticed, some of the areas are more urban areas. You have to keep in mind that we're talking about firebrands and the primary source of, of ignition of these structures is firebrands. So we have to also consider the ember zone. The ember zone is pretty much about a two mile radius within the city around those primary burn areas and that pretty much encompasses the whole western side of the And this is pretty much what we use for our example. If wildland fire has a reduction project, this is a sign that goes in the yards, when we do a project, those things do generate a lot of interest, which is good. So we also, in conjunction with dealing with the structures themselves, we do fuel reduction projects. And so it's a 50/50 cost share project. We reduce the fuel loading on the property in wildland-urban areas. Since August of last year is when we really started gearing up with the initiative, we've assessed about 85 properties, that's closer to probably 95 right now. We have closer to probably 40 completed projects, which totals around 100 to 150 acres and of course, you know, we're affecting millions of dollars in property values. We also do education for homeowners through homeowner association meetings, neighborhood meetings. That education is the key and we also do formation of firewise communities and that's really an educational tool for the communities themselves, the neighbor communities or the different homeowner associations to use as an educational tool, year after year, to keep the concept of firewise on their minds all the time. There's just a few pictures of kind of what we've done, they're kind of what properties should look like. Here's a pretty good example of that buffer zone that we're talking about around a property. He's got good separation between the forest and his home. And this is a good example of how we reduce that ladder fuel. In this picture, you can really tell where if there's a fire on this piece of property, that fire's going to stay on the ground. It's not going to get up into the trees. The ladder fuel component is gone. That process of, of where the fire gets from the grass to the smaller trees to the larger trees. If we can keep it on the ground, then we're doing good. And you can kind of tell through these pictures that this is the objective we're trying to reach here. We'll have a little before and after fun here. It's pretty evident the difference, you can see. In this scenario, there's no stopping that fire. If there's a fire on that piece of property, we would pretty much have to wait until it gets somewhere else before we can control it. So you can see the difference we're making here. The projects are significant and they do a significant service to the city. And these maps illustrate the progress we're making. The green illustrates completed properties. The red illustrates properties that have been assessed with no action taken yet. Yellow means we're in progress. And by this map, you can see that, how the work progresses in these communities. We have a property owner that does something, whether it's peer pressure or just by doing the right thing, the neighbor says, you know what, I'll do something too. And so you can see in these different neighborhoods where, you know, slowly but surely, we're expanding outwards and we're making bigger, bigger and bigger chunks of, of areas inside the city where we've got mitigated properties, which means that if we do have severe fire behavior in these areas of the, of the city, which will happen eventually, then we have areas of the city where we can probably get control of the fire. This is the Wildwood area, same scenario. You can kind of see how it's progressing around the communities. And this is the Skyline Drive area. These are just a few areas. We are in other areas of the city, but in the interest of time, that's all I have for you tonight. Do we have any questions?
Thank you, Tim. And to the council and, and the entire community, this is a very serious message. We're celebrating our 40th anniversary of the flood and for a little history lesson, in 1963, there was a study done about the Rapid Creek floodway. And if I remember right, the last paragraph or so said the floodway should be cleared, but the political will probably isn't there. So I always say God took care of it nine years later. We've had several fires in our area and probably the most remarkable one was Westbury. I don't know how many of you were here then, I was, and we were out for three days and we were extremely lucky on that one. Extremely lucky. The fire did not go behave as it was expected to and our losses were less than anticipated. Luck is just that. And I think we are being warned, we have a chance to do something, we must do it. And I, a message to the community, to all people, the danger is extremely high. Do everything you can to be extremely careful and work with the Fire Department and the State Forest Service, whoever, to minimize this danger that we are in and to maintain that standard for the rest of the time, okay? And if there are any questions, I'd be happy entertaining, but thank you, Tim and Chief, for the work. I hope that community organizations, neighborhoods will ask you to come out and visit. I know we've got some outline communities outside, like in the Sharon Lake Road area that should hear this message. I would hope we can be asked and we go and we do everything we can to mitigate the problem. With that, thank you. Thank you, Tim. Good job. Job well done.
Thanks.
And we'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. Lieutenant Weaver took me on a tour of the neighboring areas in the southwest part of the community and he shared some actual hands-on experience, what, what I was looking for and what I was getting educated on and if it's possible, when we do the budgeting session, and I'll ask the question of Tim, if I may, is that you cited a number that we should look at during our budgeting process and I'm not going to say we're going to get the money, but you, we, I think we should explore that dollar amount that you were talking about. Could you recite that value that you were suggesting that, that the city council take a look at for supplementing the grants that we're using right now?
Thanks, Richie. Let me explain this a little bit. Now, that 50/50 grant process that we use is, is a supplemental grant process and it's a 50/50 match. And a lot of times, these properties are large enough to where even after the 50% match, we still have contributions from the homeowners that still can be in that $3,000 to $4,000 range, even higher than that. And so although the 50/50 program is a great deal, because we're focusing on the entire property, sometimes we have properties where, you know, the homeowners aren't necessarily indifferent to this problem. They know that they have an issue. They know they might be putting their, not only themselves, but their neighborhoods at risk and they don't want to do that. But a lot of times, they still have people that say, you know, Tim, I, I really want to help out and do my part, but I still can't come up with the, you know, the money. And so a nice thing that, you know, the, one thing that we're looking at, we're all looking, always looking at additional resources for funding and so in retrospect, you know, even if I had supplemental income and if the city could, you know, maybe provide that through some sort of a grant process or whatever we can work out later, but you know, when I was talking to Richie before, sorry, you know, say we put a cap of even $1,000 at a property and say I'm, we're only talking about $50,000, that's 50 properties that I could conceivably affect. And remember, that's not just three or four trees on a property, that's the entire property. So if I'm affecting 50 properties with, with that cap in mind and that's just a, a figure that, you know, we kind of were throwing around, but you can see where we get a pretty big bang for our dollar. And those 50 properties, you know, you're talking about maybe 300 or 400 acres inside the city limits, that's a big chunk of land. And so, you know, anything that we can do to help offset the costs and, and basically, you know, it's not really necessarily about how much we help these people. For me, it's really about getting the work done. It's either we get it done or we don't. And if we don't, well then we're facing a scenario that we don't want to face. So that's kind of what we were talking about. And so that $50,000 range, $100,000 range, if we had $100,000, that could affect 100 projects, that's 100 properties. And if you look at those maps, that's a big chunk of Carriage Hills, Wildwood, Pine Dale Heights, that's a lot. That's a lot.
And we'll go to Ron Sasso. Oh, I'm sorry. Richie, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. One more question for Tim or maybe even the Chief. Chief Maltevern is about the, this, I was looking at the, the videos that were placed on Facebook and I, I think some other sources were out there about the video. In fact, it made it to YouTube that was uploaded. Maybe Chief Maltevern can ask, address this one here, but I was specifically interested in how fast the rate or the speed of that fire was going on Cowboy Hill. I, I think it's one of those things that, that the public, it really isn't able to, to grasp how quickly that fire was going around that hill and, and if they can, Chief, if you can kind of give us an idea how, how quickly that fire was moving through the, through the grassier area.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, this is a, a follow-up to a conversation that Richie and I had had previous to, tonight about rates of spread for wildfires and the example we're talking about is the Mallow Street Fire that burned last week or a week and a half ago. That fire was a ground cover fire for the most part, burning a grass and so that was a relatively slow burning fire. In the space of about eight hours, we burned that entire hillside. So rates of spread can be dictated by winds and by terrain, which, and, and of course, like Tim's talking about, the amount of fuel in that area. All three of those things, we have a great deal of west, the west half of our city is in steep rugged terrain, extreme buildup of fuel like Tim's talking and there aren't many days in Rapid City, we don't have some type of an upslope wind. So we could see rates of spread in Rapid City that would exceed what we saw in the Mallow Street Fire if you were to move that into forested areas. To give you an idea, you know, it'd be a, a fire that you certainly couldn't outrun. It would be a, a fire that would overwhelm our resources very fast if it was to occur in those areas like Tim's given us examples of tonight. So, you know, it's kind of all over the board. It's, sometimes you can, you can walk faster than the fires burning in the grass and other times you can't run fast enough, which ultimately sometimes loses the lives of firefighters in, in the United States each year. So it's all over the map, but in Rapid City, we are, I would put up Rapid City with a danger, I guess, relative to many of other, the most wildland prone areas in the country. We're talking Southern California areas, of the Front Range of Colorado, Idaho, places like that. We're, Rapid City is chalked for a, a large, major catastrophic wildfire, just like many of those communities have already encountered. So it's, it's a legitimate threat and, and we're pouring a lot of time and resources towards it at this time.
Thank you, Mayor and, and thank you, Chief. Appreciate you, you're a gentleman giving this presentation and it's something that we need to talk about and visit a little bit more about when we come in budget time for the supplemental part and I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Richie. And we'll go to Ron Sasso. Ron?
Thank you and thank you for the presentation and the importance, knowing that as dry as it's been, things, if we don't see any rain, any moisture, things can only get worse. One of the things that I just was thinking about and whether or not this is something that, I know this probably isn't the, necessarily the place to make a decision right at the moment, but thinking, looking at our, our snow removal budget and that we haven't had much snow and as a result, we haven't spent as much and as a result, fire danger is higher. I don't know if that's something we can look at in the future of trying to balance that instead of automatically looking at council contingency, knowing that, that more than likely, the Fire Department is going to be, budget is going to be pushed to the limit if things continue the way they're going. So really appreciate everything that, that you all do. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you Lieutenant Tim for the presentation and to Jerry Wright for pulling this off and asking for a presentation. Any further discussion on this? The motion is to acknowledge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 36, legal and finance, Charity, can you read this in record for us?
Item number 36 is to acknowledge receipt of letter from the USPS regarding mail processing facility and I'll make a motion to acknowledge.
Motion to acknowledge by Doyle, second by Davis. And we'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for allowing me to pull this item off the agenda. A, a lot of people put a lot of hard work into, I'm going to call it, saving this service that the postal service is providing for the city of Rapid City. It was one of those little known things that was happening with our local post office and a lot of the communities in this, in the hills area would be affected by this, by losing this service, which would have been outsourced to other municipalities. So I greatly appreciate all the people that put the work and the effort into saving this processing facility and, and thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to speak on this issue.
Thank you, Richie. Any further discussion? The motion is to acknowledge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 49, Charity?
Item- Item 49 is to request the mayor to authorize the city attorney's office to prepare an amendment to the code of conduct relating to due process for presentation at the May 30th, 2012 Legal and Finance Committee meeting, and I move approval.
Second. We have motion by Doyle and a second by Sasso for approval. Any discussion on item 49? Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just not clear why we're putting additional burden onto the staff, why we need to do this. So I'm just needing a little clarification at this point before I, I'm willing to proceed with this effort.
Okay. We'll go to Ron Sasso. Ron, would you like to try and answer that?
Sure. One of the things, looking at the code of conduct, the discussion started with looking, looking at the code of conduct and whether or not it meets our needs. And what we found is that, at the very least, at present, it does. What we did find was that there isn't a good process for disciplinary action or, and what happened previously, the only, when it has been used, was a lot of the rules and rules were made up on the fly. And so, we're looking at just clarifying the process, knowing that it is, it is political, even though we want to take as much of the politics out of it as possible. So, that is something, that is the goal. Personally, I still would like to see at some point in the future, having it be strengthened as far as the ethics portion. There was a nice AP article that was in the Rapid City Journal about ethics and process, and I think there's more that we can learn from that. So, but that's why I am supporting it. Thank you.
Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. That helps clarify part of it, but I'm concerned that we're establishing something special for the city council, whereas we've got already a non-union policy that we could follow and use that as a model if something did occur in the future. The, so, I'm just concerned that we're going to be spending staff resource time on something that is already in place, we're already having something in effect, and we can use previous experiences as a model if need to. And then, if some other special circumstances take place, we will still be lining up something different to address that issue. And then, when it comes down to the final, final process in the whole scheme of things, we, the city council, or the city council at that time, is the one that makes the decision on how to proceed on that. So it isn't left up to another committee or any other subordinate body. It still has to land in the city council's lap when we get this accomplished. So, thank you, Mayor.
Ron Sasso?
Just to answer some of those questions, one of the problems with the non-union policy is that one of the first things is, would be going to the supervisor. There isn't a supervisor. Going to the department head, there isn't a department head for an elected official. So, that's one of the reasons why it needs to be looked at, because it is different. The city council is a different body, and so the goal is really just to clarify that process moving forward.
Any further discussion? The motion is for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one no. From Richie Nordstrom. Item number 50. Charity?
Item number 50 is to approve the resolution number 2012-034, establishing a moratorium on off-premise digital signage to allow for review of zoning regulations, and I'll make a motion to table.
Second. We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Sasso to table. There is no discussion on a tabling motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item is tabled. We are now in consent, continue consent items, items 51 through 53. Are there any items that need to be removed? If not, can we have a motion to continue those three items to April 2?
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on non-consent items 54 through 74. Do not have any public comment on these items. Can we have a motion, open public comment?
Some move.
Motion by Doyle, I'm sorry, a motion by Roberts, second by Peterson. Sorry, it's been a long day. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Would you not have any speaker?
Motion closed.
Okay? We have a motion by Davis and a second by Doyle. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 54. Charity?
Item number 54. Second reading ordinance number 5801, and ordinance amending chapter 1.08 of the Rapid City Municipal Code relating to wards and precincts, and I move approval.
Second. We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Sasso. Any discussion? Ron Sasso. Ron?
This is something that, there was a lot of work done by a lot of different people on this. There were some concerns brought forward recently from some Ward 5 citizens that had expressed concerns that they were going to be having to vote at Horace Mann in the distance. That's something that we were not able to change just because of legislative districts, the way that it was drawn out. However, what is very important for people to understand, and I know Bonnie and I have been talking with citizens and informing them that they can vote absentee, and that is the best alternative at this point. This process will, we'll probably be able to review this in another year if needed, but I believe it's, it's good as it is right now, as good as we're going to get it. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Before we proceed to the vote, Pauline, I have a quick question for you. What's the name, there's a new process that was approved by the legislature this year to allow for open voting, and there's a name for that process. Can you help us out and describe how that process works?
I believe that is a voting center process, where the county can establish various voting centers throughout the municipality or the county in their case, and you can vote at any one of those voting centers, no matter where your jurisdiction really lies. And my understanding then is, is there had to be a computerized registration list, as well as a hand, a printout, so that way, one voting center would know if you voted at the other voting center. So there's a check-in process that would be electronic, so that information could be shared.
And that's in progress for November's election?
My understanding is that it is not in progress for Pangton County. That may have changed since the last time I spoke with our county auditor, but the last time I spoke to her, she did not think that was going to work for us.
Okay. I think that's a discussion that we need to continue to have with the county. Bonnie Peterson?
Yes, I just wanted to say that it was very concerning for us, because we have constituents that live just within four or five blocks from one polling place, and they have to go 15, 20 minutes across town to vote at another location. We did what we could to try to minimize, to minimize that, but we ran up against a wall right now. But we're still working and hoping that we can encourage the county to implement these voting centers, so that people can vote closer to their home. It's just good common sense. So, thank you.
The motion is to approve item number 54. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 55. Charity?
Item number 55. Second reading ordinance number 5799, an ordinance establishing that applications submitted pursuant to Title 17 be signed by the owner of property identified in application or by their designated agent by adding section 17.54.065 to the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move to approve.
Motion by Doyle, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 56.
Item 56. First reading ordinance number 5804, an ordinance establishing timeframes for the completion of projects funded through the Rapid City Economic Development and Civic Improvement Fund, commonly known as the Vision Fund, by amending section 3.16.020 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move to approve.
Second. Motion by Doyle, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 57.
57 is the first reading of ordinance number 5805, an ordinance to provide terms of members for the Opportunity Capture Fund Oversight Board by amending section 3.22.020 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move to approve.
Motion by Doyle, second by Brown. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 58.
58 is the first reading of ordinance number 5807, an ordinance to revise the types of checks for which service charges apply by amending section 9.04.010 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Motion by Doyle, second by Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 59.
59 is the first reading of ordinance number 5810, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning from general agricultural district to medium-density residential district for a parcel of land located on the south side of North Plaza Drive, approximately 450 feet east of the intersection of Fountain Plaza Drive and North Plaza Drive. And I will move approval.
Second. Motion by Doyle, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 60.
Item number 60 is to acknowledge February 2012 general fund cash report, and I'll move approval, acknowledgement, rather.
We have a motion by Doyle, second by Peterson for acknowledgement, and we'll go to Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out, for those in the audience, if you were not able to look at this earlier, we are currently at about $6.8 million in the general fund cash that is just shy of $600,000 over our reserve amount. It is also about $3.4 million more than February last year, so we are making progress. Typically, what happens this time of year, because we get our large property tax receipts in May and November, you will get those large checks, we'll have large balances those months, and then the months from there will continue to go down until we receive our next big monthly, or semi-annual check. In addition, in February of 2012, we only received one check from sales tax, our sales tax check, because of timing issues at the state level. We are hopeful that we will receive three sales tax checks then in March, so, but we also, just to forewarn you, we also have three bi-weekly payrolls in March, so hopefully that will offset it a little bit. So, anyway, just want to point that out.
Thank you, Pauline. Any further discussion on item 60? The motion is to acknowledge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 61. Charity?
61 is to authorize mayor and finance officer to sign settlement agreement between the city of Rapid City and Lane Christiansen Company regarding repairs for well number eight, and I move approval.
Motion by Doyle, second by Peterson for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bids. Pauline, we've had a question from one of the aldermen, if we, if there could be a motion on items 62 through 74 to accept the lowest bid. Are there, is there anything?
There are two bids that we are asking to reject, the bids, and giving authorization to re-advertise at a later time.
Which, which are they?
One of them is the Perrin Drainage Outfall Element 8.
Okay. Item 63?
And the other is for the sweeper brushes, broom refills.
Which is 74. Okay. Is there any objection to approving 62 through 73, and 63 and 74 would be considered separately? Is there any objection to that? Gary Brown?
Yes, Mayor. I will have to abstain from the three, I believe it is, that Hills Material won the bid, since I have my brother-in-law works for the company and could gain monetarily by contracts.
Do we know which ones those are?
Ah, yeah, with the first Trout Court and the hot mix, and I think the gravel. Can't remember the third.
And there's one more that we are not awarding to the low bidder.
Let's just start with 62. Jerry, it was the thought that counted. Thank you very much.
Now I'm on the board, so I apologize. We received four bids on 62, which is the street rehabilitation project for Trout Court. The recommendation is to award to Hills Material Company in the amount of $70,824.
Motion by Davis, second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Are you abstaining?
Yep. I got it. Opposed? Motion carries with one abstention from Gary Brown.
The next item for bid is the Perrin Drainage Outfall Element Number 8. The recommendation is actually to reject all bids and authorize them to re-advertise at a different time. As you can see, the bids came in quite higher than the estimate or the advertising authority.
We have motion by Peterson, second by Davis, to reject all bids and re-advertise. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Gary, do you want to abstain from that?
Abstain.
Okay, with one abstention from Gary Brown. 64?
64 is the CSAC West Stets ADA Ramp Improvements. Recommendation is to award the bid to True Form Construction, Inc., in the amount of $23,152.50.
Motion by Davis, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 65.
65 is for the hot mixed asphaltic concrete. We received three bids on this. Recommendation is to award the bid to Hills Materials Company in the amount of $147,870.
Motion by Peterson, second by Doyle, and there will be one abstention from Gary Brown. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one abstention from Gary Brown.
66 is for the ready-mixed concrete for the various city departments. We received two bids on this. The recommendation is to award the bid to Pete Lean and Sons in the amount of $65,700.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Roberts. Any discussion? Gary, do you need to abstain from this one?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 67.
67 is for limestone gravel. We received two bids on this. The recommendation is to award to Hills Materials Company in the amount of $48,925.
Motion by Peterson, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one abstention from Gary Brown.
Number 68 is for the utility cut Portland Concrete Replacement for the various city departments. We received two bids on this item. Recommendation is to award to Brewer Construction in the amount of $63,130.30.
Motion by Peterson, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
69 is for the water treatment coagulant in the Water Division. We received two bids on this. The recommendation is to award to Kamira Water Solutions in the amount of $32,000.
Motion by Davis, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is for fluoride in the Water Division. We received just one bid on this, and the recommendation is to award to Hawkins, Inc., in the amount of $85,196.80.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by, second by Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 71.
71 is for chlorine gas in the Water Division. Recommendation is to award the bid to Hawkins, Inc., in the amount of $24,900, as a low bid did not meet the city's specifications.
Motion by Doyle, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is for the odor control chemical for the lift stations. We received two bids on this, and their recommendation is to award to Hawkins, Hawkins, Inc., in the amount of seventy-four thousand four hundred dollars.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is for sodium chloride in the Street Division. We received five bids on this item. Recommendation is to award the bid to Nebraska Salt and Grain Company in the amount of three hundred sixty-nine thousand fifty dollars.
Motion by Roberts, second by Sasso. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seventy-four.
I just want to point out, too, that this is an estimate based on quantities, and so that may actually change throughout the, the year depending on the budget amount and also the need, so... Next item is for the sweeper broom refills. We received four bids on this item, and the recommendation is to reject all bids and to re-advertise at a later date.
So moved.
Motion by Brown, second by Peterson, to reject all bids and re-advertise at a later date? So does that mean Pauline is going to be coming back through for authorization to rebid, or you would just go ahead and rebid?
We would just go ahead and rebid, because this would be giving the authorization as part of the motion.
Very good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on two public hearing items, items seventy-five through eighty. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Davis, second by Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is now open. We do not have any speaker requests forms at this time. The public hearing remains open. So we are now on items seventy-five through seventy-seven, which are the continued public hearing consent items. Unless someone would like to remove any of those items, can we continue seventy-five through seventy-seven per the date specified?
Move to continue.
Motion by Peterson, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now...
Close?
Okay, we have a motion by Davis and a second by Doyle to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on consent public hearing items seventy-eight and seventy-nine. Anybody like to remove any of those items? If not, can we have a motion to approve both of those?
So moved.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Roberts. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eighty. Gary Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Number eighty is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision request by Advanced Engineering for Ray Lipsky for a major amendment to a commercial development plan located at thirty-six twenty-five Fifth Street, and I move to approve.
Do we have a second? Motion by Brown, second by Roberts. What have we, what have we, what is your motion to approve?
Appeal.
Okay. To grant the, grant the appeal?
That it was approved by the Planning Commission? I'm sorry.
Okay. Please clarify.
Let me put this back to the floor, if my second was...
Motion's been withdrawn, is, now belongs to the floor. We'll go to Charity Doyle.
Appeal.
Okay, we have a motion to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's decision.
Okay.
We have, okay, we have a motion by Doyle and a second by Peterson. Any further discussion on that? Charity, you still have the floor? Okay?
Mayor?
The public comment period has passed, and so if somebody would like to ask a question, now is an appropriate time, otherwise we will proceed to the vote.
Mayor, I would like to ask a question of the lady in the audience of what information she might be able to bring to us.
Okay. Step forward and state your name.
Hi, Mayor and City Council. My name is Ginger Schutz. I'm owner of Gingerbread Properties, thirty-six fifteenth Fifth Street.
Do you have any comments or information you want to bring to, at this time?
The main thing that I would like to bring forward is, as far as my property, I have a, I've had problems with my property up there, and to the point where I've had to, I've had to, well, let me just describe it. I had one end of my building cave-in, one room of my building cave-in sink into the ground, so I actually had to get the, you know, remove the concrete and then build the slab back up. And so, and since that time, I've had, there's like a stream of water that constantly runs down that area of the driveway, and, and then it causes problems for my driveway where it settles, and that driveway is shared with the VA driveway. And so, I, my suspicion is, is there is a spring up there. And I've been told that there is a spring right across the street also, and so I just have a, I have a fear that if there is any kind of construction going on around that area, which is but up to my property, that it is going to cause really bad problems for my building.
So have you had any engineering studies done, or any checking?
I've tried, I've, I contacted somebody this week whenever I got the notification that I possibly could appeal it, and, and who I've contacted is a, a, a sore guy, a sore guy named Dodge, let's see, Rick Baker with FMS, so I looked to hire him.
So I'll have him here all year till the floor?
Okay. We'll go to Charity Doyle. Charity?
Thank you. Ms. Schutz, if I may, just to help, I know you're probably feeling pretty nervous about that.
Yeah.
I can tell. I could tell that reading your letter as well.
I'm a nurse, I'm used to one-on-one.
But just know that the, the engineer for the VA Hospital, Mr. Banks, is going to have to sign off on these plans, and, and they can't sign off on plans if it's going to cause problems for any adjacent property owners. And we're also going to have the city engineers looking at that as well. So there's a lot of levels of checks and balances that it's going to have to go through before that parking lot is okayed and before the construction begins. And again, if, you know, Mr. Banks signs off on this and says, here's my stamp, this project is good to go, there is your protection right there.
Okay.
So we're not in the business of, of creating problems for people, I hope, but we are doing everything we can, taking all of that into consideration, and they're not going to be able to do anything that's going to damage or, or further challenge your property.
Mm-hmm. So I will just have to do that on my expense then, just to protect me, right?
Do.
As far as hiring Mr. Banks and...
No, the VA Hospital has him. So all of, all of the...
Oh, Mr. Banks, okay.